Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 20th, 2016, final meeting of our school year. I would like to ask everybody make sure that their phones are silenced. Notice the locations of the emergency exits. Over the past couple of days, there have been a rash of attacks around the world, and I'd like to have a moment of silence for those victims. But more importantly, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the children in the world who are going to be sitting in places like St. Jude's and Shriners who won't be home for the holidays. So if we could have a moment of silence, please? Stand for the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Trends, the Record, Aim West Milford, I guess we can take that one out, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, and Cable Vision of Warwick, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolutions were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Can we have roll call, please, Mrs. Francisco?
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Drew?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mr. Foodie?
Present.
Mr. Hubert?
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Mr. Robbins?
Mrs. Schultz?
Here. No form.
One, would you mind reading the resolution for executive session?
I look to put the Rock Halling Resolution into order before going to the executive session for approximately sixty minutes for the purposes of discussing gifts, personnel, negotiations, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege of confidentiality is no longer applicable.
Just to clarify, you should put a time on that because otherwise it's right now.
Yeah, nine p.m.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. What's that? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Superintendent's report, Dr. Anamon.
Good evening, everybody. And happy holidays, everybody in West Milford. Last month, at our last board meeting, we discussed the idea of student recognition. Are we doing enough? Can we do more? And the answer is yes, we are doing a lot, and yes, we can do more. So we met with the principals over the last few weeks, the supervisors, and we asked them a simple question, what are we doing to recognize achievement? What are we doing to recognize excellence? And the administrative team gave me some small examples we're going to be sharing with you this evening. For example, and I'll give you a couple from each level. At Actua, they have monthly Character Ed assemblies, which include awards for students. These are full-school assemblies. They have their end-of-the-year awards assemblies, and they have assemblies and special events such as Girls on the Run or other notable achievements. At Upper Greenwood Lake School, they hand out bear pores for great deeds and acts of character. They have character bracelets, Golden Shoe Awards, which I believe are class-wide, end-of-the-mark period and end-of-the-year awards assemblies, as well as a very visible presence on social media where they acknowledge the feats of outstanding achievements from our students. At McPepper, they have a Citizens of the Month Club, and they get rewarded with a trip to the Applebee's for lunch. The principal hand-delivers the honor roll certificates during homeroom every marking period. They have a character education wall where if children are caught being good, their names are on the wall. At the high school, they have certificates for students in various disciplines such as Honor Society for Award Languages. They have National Merit Scholars, Citizens of the Month, and they also use social media very well to publicize our achievements. In addition, we have for the board here, for members of the public on the side, we have some newsletters here tonight, and these have all come out since our last board meeting. We have the Athletic High School Newsletter, which is for the fall season. We have the Find and Perform in Arts Newsletter, which is their second marking period newsletter. And we have our West Milford High School Monthly Newsletter as well. So those get shared on our website. There's copies for each board member, there's copies for the public, and they're very wonderful ways to get the positive news out about what we're doing. All right, so I've also asked our athletic director, Mr. Trenacosta, to come up and maybe speak about this new newsletter, this new endeavor he started this year. Thank you very much. First edition looks great.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. I'm Joe Trenacosta, I'm the athletic director at the high school. I'm also the supervisor of physical education, health, and driver education. I want to thank the board for this opportunity to present, as well as our central administrators who really advocated for our athletic programs. This is my fourth year now in the position, and getting an opportunity to really reflect on our programs at the end of each season and plan for further seasons is really important. I promise to be very, very brief. This newsletter is available online. So basically, if you go to the website, as B-Bars has up there, on the right-hand side you see Athletics tab. Click on that, and all things related to athletics are on this website. The first link is a link to the Fall Athletics Newsletter, so you can get it electronically. So I'm certainly not going to take more than just a few minutes. I'm certainly not going to read through the whole newsletter. It is available there for you, but we're excited to put this thing together. I want you to all know that this is a collaborative effort. Each coach is responsible for their team page, and as you scroll down, you will see that there's a Champions page. We were very fortunate this fall to have two Passaic County championship teams. Our field hockey team won the Passaic County championship, as well as our gymnastics. In fact, when you talk about student recognition, one thing that was really fantastic is our field hockey team was also recognized at the Passaic County Freeholders' most recent meeting on December 13th, and Coach Provost and her coaching staff and her athletes were invited there, and that was a really great event. So congratulations to them. I'd also like to note, not in this newsletter, is that we, like Dr. Anamon mentioned, we talk a lot about character. You know, in athletics, everyone wants to know if we're winning, but it's also you can redefine success in how you treat people and how you treat people in your community, and we try to do that. So on every team page, if you go through this at a later date, or tonight as you're thumbing through, you'll find that some, that each program is doing something that relates to the community, character, charitable events. Our gymnastics team is, has been nominated by our School of Character Committee to actually apply for a Promising Practices Award, as our field hockey and cross-country teams have won last year. Our football team has been encouraged to apply for a Promising Practice Award as well. So as you scroll through, you can see that there are a lot of different accolades and things like that that we like to promote, and we really appreciate the support of the board and our administration. So thank you so much, and have a happy holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Trenacosta. Next up, I'd like to invite a representative from the VFW Post 7198, Mr. Bill Johnson, here to present an award for the Voice of, the annual VFW Voice of Democracy Essay Contest winner to one of our high school students.
Thank you. I'm Bill Johnson, I'm the commander of Post 7198 of the local VFW. We are the people who do the fighting, and we're responsible for you being allowed here to have a meeting in a public forum. We've been participating in this program, the Voice of Democracy, which for years, it's a national program. The top prize is actually $30,000 scholarship, and there are levels all the way up from here. It goes to our district, to our state, and then to our national competition. All of the people who win at the state go to Washington, D.C. for a week on the VFW, and then they go to our final convention where they are awarded, and they get to meet the president and also. So it's a very valuable tool for the students. Any students can participate, and we have great participation here in West Milford. We've had some fine winners. So I understand that only our first-place winner is here, Alex. We have a bunch of stuff to give to Alex, and we'll start out with the plaque indicating his first place. This is my senior vice commander, Sam.
Congratulations.
Okay, we have some, a patch and a pin that you can wear. And this is my chief warrant officer Marine. We forgive her for that.
He's just jealous.
Pat is our senior veteran and our decorated war veteran, and he has a medallion.
I might use her. You have to wear this to your prom. It makes a great keep-off.
And last but never least, my quartermaster, who hands all the money, has a token of our appreciation and your achievement. I'd like Alex now, if it's okay with you, to read his winning composition. He's already been submitted at the district level to compete against all of New Jersey. So Alex?
As an active and upstanding citizen within my community, there are many rules to take by which I can better myself and my community. I have been granted, as an American of these United States, rights that many others around the world will never experience for themselves. However, if a group were asked how they believe they are being active in their community, a number of them would undoubtedly answer voting. However, for a high school student such as myself, currently unable to voice my opinion through the right of suffrage, what is my role? What is my responsibility to America? My responsibility to America is therefore deeply embedded in my own backyard and in my community's activities, where I can lend service hours to our local needs. For me, this involvement takes the shape of Boy Scouts. As a Boy Scout, I have traversed the ranks all the way to Eagle Scout because I know that my action and volunteerism will benefit my community and thereby my nation. The rank of Eagle Scout itself requires scouts to formulate and take action on a service project, the only requirement being that it must benefit the community in one way or another. Putting aside my accomplishment of the rank of Eagle Scout, my Boy Scout troop and many other Boy Scout troops across our town and across our country work to better the common good of their own individual areas. My troop volunteers monthly at our town's blood drives and often volunteers our scouts to make the flag presentations at important events of the community, such as our town's marching band tattoo performance. The troop calls upon scouts to put service above self. My responsibility to America is to ensure that my community benefits from my actions and grows and develops as a whole. My responsibility to America continues through school events and therefore school-run sports events. I take part in my school's cross-country team, not only because I enjoy running, but also know because, also because I know I will, I will become an improved citizen because of it. It allows me to represent my school and community in the process. My team takes part in values, valuable service activities as well, such as clothing drives and being involved in town-wide events, such as this year's color room. My responsibility to America is evident in such scenarios as the clothing drive, where donated goods may be necessary in other parts of the nation or even the world. I do my best to be involved in activities such as these so that my actions will benefit my community, which in turn will help my nation. As I have already mentioned, my team is involved in town-wide pastimes as well, such as the color room, which was a new initiative this year requiring our team effort in order to strengthen and make known this beneficial event. My responsibility to America, although I may not be able to vote, is still an essential idea that I must safeguard as a citizen of this, of the United States of America. I must work to be involved in my community and my nation and to better myself for the ultimate goal of bettering my country. I must also work to better my nation for the numerous generations of Americans who will come after me, as many before have already done. In the words of civil rights leader Barbara Jordan, "Let each person do his or her part. If one citizen is unwilling to participate, all of us are going to suffer." For the American idea, though it is shared by all of us, it is realized in each one of us. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the board for supporting our program and the high school teachers and the executives who helped push the program through, and we will be back next year with more awards. We're getting tired of seeing Alex's name on everything, so we're, we just did his Explorer Scout the other day. So congratulations, Alex, and thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't realize you were a regular at these meetings, but congratulations again. And thank you again, Commander Johnson, and for your, thank you for your support and thank you for your service. Also like to thank Oliver Prosonicle, our social studies supervisor, district-wide, for helping organize this program. Next up, we have our monthly progress towards district goals. Couple, couple bullet points I'd like to get out there. We mentioned briefly in November that the district was accepted into the AP Capstone Program for 2017-18. Our teachers and administrators have been busy taking site visits to other schools that are one, two, or even three years ahead of us already. So schools that are already years two, three, or four of this program, we're visiting. We're visiting, I believe, High Point Regional tomorrow, and we're getting some ideas of what works, what doesn't work, and pitfalls to avoid in year one. And if there's anything we could do on master schedule to help facilitate this program. So no changes now, but we're still looking at making this a very successful year one. We're planning to include a one-to-one computing component to this research-based program. So if, for example, we start next year with grade 10 in a 2017-18 school year, we're looking at one section of research, AP research in grade 10 for maybe 12 to 15 students that we anticipate joining this program. We'd like to keep it, consider, we're basing this on the college, on the university model where it's a little different from your typical high school class. This is much more of a research-based, based class. So if you've been on a college campus any time recently, every student has a laptop. You will see a piece of paper or a pen anywhere, and that helps them with their research. It helps them get their notes. So we're hoping to include a one-to-one component for the AP Capstone Program for September. So that would involve as many students as we have, 12 to 15 students, plus two teachers, a Chromebook for each of those people, and they're about $250 each. So we're leaning towards going down now. MAFS seems to be working very well. And again, we're looking to start in September in grade 10, and then in 2018-19, grades 10 and 11. So we're going to start with one grade and then move it up every successive year. So it'll be grades 10 and 11 eventually, but in year one, it'll be just for sophomores. Also, we have been analyzing our 2016 PARC scores, and we're trying to develop strategies to improve them across the district, grades three through 11. We're purchasing some additional PARC prep materials that will support math support, that will support our students in math for this school year, and we're looking for a more comprehensive plan for next year as well. So we hope to have something to announce over the, after the new year, where we can do something for this year's test score of 2017. Next up, earlier this year, we instituted the Pay-Fir program at our elementary schools for our lunch program, and Pay-Fir was the last piece. We started this year with the, with the swipe cards and the PIN, PIN numbers at our elementary school. We've had them at McPepper and the high school, and early this year, we brought it down to the elementary schools for K-6. The last component was to roll out the Pay-Fir, and we did that right around Thanksgiving time this year. So now the parents have the ability to auto-fill their child's lunch account with a credit card or a check, so they know how much is in there at all times. Gives parents a little bit more control over their children, what their children eat, what they can order in a classroom. So that was successfully rolled out last month. A few weeks ago, we accepted the retirement of our auto shop teacher at the high school, and we are posted for that position, but we are having difficulty spelling it. So we're obviously have a strong online presence for that spot. We're also looking to advertise the newspaper to fill what is a very valuable position for us, but also a very difficult position to fill. So I'll update the board a little bit later in the school year on our progress toward that spot. But we do have an open position for auto shop, and we just found out today that the position's going to be open a little earlier than anticipated. We were looking at September of 2017, and it's going to be a little bit sooner. So we'll have an exact date shortly. We have one student suspension to report since last meeting. One student at the high school was suspended for two days out of school. That was in early this month. And before I cast it off to our student representative, I would like to thank, we had two interim principals serving this fall. At Paradise Knoll, we had Mrs. Hart, and here at Westbrook, we had Dr. Ober. And I know they're not here, but I would like to thank them for their service and their contributions over the last four months. They did a wonderful job, and we're going to miss them greatly. Mrs. Hart just emailed me, she gave me a note she'd like to read, you know, read out loud to the board. So, Dear Dr. Anamon, Mr. Novak, Ms. Francisco, Dr. McQuade, and members of the Board of Education, I would like to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you for entrusting me with serving as interim principal at Paradise Knoll during the fall of 2016. I have truly enjoyed working with the staff, students, parents, and administrative team. Throughout this timeframe, Mrs. Miller and I have been communicating in an ongoing manner in order to allow for a smooth transition upon her return. As you know, Mrs. Miller returns to the office on January 3rd to continue more of her great work. I would like to wish you all a wonderful holiday with your family and friends. I wish you a great end to this school year, and I certainly look forward to hearing more wonderful things about the West Milford Public Schools. And I did speak with Dr. Ober today. She shares pretty much the exact same sentiment of this notice. So she also thanks the board, and she wishes everybody a happy holidays. So that's all for my report. Mrs. Hogan, do you have something for us?
I do. These past couple of weeks have been very, very busy at the high school. So to start off, we recently had area band auditions within wind ensemble and symphonic band at the high school. It's an area competition, meaning that people are auditioning for spots in a regional orchestra, and people had to audition, and we had approximately 12 kids get in, myself being one of them. So we're very excited. Wes Milford's Model United Nations Team went on November 17th through the 20th to Princeton University to compete at their Model United Nations Conference, and myself and Ryan Gillen were one best position paper, and there were some vocal commendations for kids that were from our team. 108 people donated blood in our annual blood drive, so approximately 67 pints were collected. On November 16th, the green team started a free school supplies closet, so anyone is welcome to use slightly-used school supplies. The annual food drive, which was run through the varsity and interact team, was a very big success. Food was donated to three local countries, and Mrs. McCourt's AP Government and Politics class donated the most, and they get a free bagel breakfast this Thursday. November 7th was Career Day, so that was a success as well. December 8th was On-Site Decision Day. That was a very exciting day. I got to see some of my best friends actually get accepted to their favorite colleges, so that was exciting. Many, many students got accepted. The woodshop classes, along with biology classes, AP Environmental Science, Geometry, and CAD classes made boxes for birds, bees, and bats, like habitats on the property of the school. And Classroom Close-Up came on October 24th to actually film this event, and it's going to air in January. Tonight is open-mic night at the high school, so students are reading their own poetry and their own short stories for their peers. The choir concert was in mid-December, and it was spectacular. I can attest to that. I went, and it was wonderful. Mrs. DeSena, the AP Literature teacher at our school, organized a parent book club, and it's currently ongoing. The Italian and German honor societies went to Lower Manhattan to visit the Tenement Museum as an extension to a lesson on Italian and German immigration. Social dance underwent dances around the world in which students learned different types of dance moves from different countries, and they performed them for their peers. Senior Choice Awards was a success with performances from seniors, the West Milford Jazz Band, West Milford Pit Percussion Section. And the High Honor Roll just recently had their bagel breakfast. So that's all that just happened these past couple of weeks. And upcoming, we just have Spirit Week, so tomorrow's Ugly Sweater Day, I'm very excited for that. We have a band concert on Thursday. The door decorating contest is also this Thursday. In January, there's Alumni Day, and there's a pep rally this Friday. So I know that was a mouthful, but that's everything that's going on.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Novak, your education report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Foodie. Good evening, everyone. I was planning on keeping it short, knowing that we were going to get to the auditors. I didn't know that the superintendent was going to take two-thirds of my report, so it's going to be even shorter than I anticipated, so I appreciate, appreciate that. I will elaborate on the AP Capstone site visits. We've had, we've completed two visits to, to other school districts, one being the Randolph Public High School, and also more recently to Livingston. Livingston was not an AP designation, but it's a school district that has a progressive high school schedule that we are interested in seeing in action. Also, we visited to see some of their STEM capabilities and the things that they're doing. So it was a tremendous visit. Both visits that we've completed, we've had some mix of administrators and staff members who've been able to see these schools in action, see these progressive schedules, see these programs, and really be able to foster some great conversations. Tomorrow, we are scheduled to be at High Point High School, which that is also a school district that has, I think they're in year two of their AP Capstone Program. They also have a different schedule structure than West Milford with a similar, similar dynamic. So we've got a team of, a team of people waiting for us in High Point who are going to meet with us and talk to us about the program, things we can expect and things we can work on in the meantime. I also wanted to take a moment to report the week prior to Thanksgiving Week. We had our American Education Week, where we invite parents into our schools to visit our classrooms, and I just wanted to read out some of the success that we had at each elementary school. We had approximately 120 visitors. That was on average, some a little bit more, some a little bit less, but right around that number for each elementary school. At the middle school, we had 60 parent visits, and at the high school, we had none reported, but I believe anyone who came was in disguise so that their kids wouldn't see them entering. It's a little different process for Parent Visitation Day at the high school. So just wanted to report out on that. I also want to say thank you to the community for our Makerspace donations. Just before Thanksgiving, we sent out a invitation to, to collect some supplies for our school Makerspaces, and we've had a very good response to that. One of the things that we've been, been hearing about, I guess some concern about where to drop those items off, so we're adjusting the website to say that it's just that at any, any school is willing and ready and knowledgeable about accepting those donations. So we've received everything from Legos, paper towel rolls, tinfoil, cereal boxes, all types of things that kids can use in the Makerspace and build and create and enjoy. So I just want to say thank you to the community for that. I wanted to also acknowledge Mrs. Hart and Dr. Ober for their, for their time in West Milford. Dr. Ober, for example, you know, she's, she's got a few days left, but today she was a, a model of perseverance as she sat through my five-hour meeting with elementary principals and supervisors to really get involved and talk about some, some of the things that we're doing to, to work within the school district for the new year. So she was there as a, as a model for Dr. Schwartz, who is the incoming Westbrook principal, so was able to sit with her and be able to go over some, some items for the future. So we were very excited about that. Also, I want to acknowledge the rest of the principals and supervisors for enduring that meeting today. It was brutal, but we got a lot accomplished. In the future, I'll give more breaks throughout, but it was, it was in Hillcrest, which the temperature could go from 60 to 90 in a, in a short span, so it was, it was good. One of the major concepts or topics of that meeting today was the, one of the discussions we've had in education committee or in subgroups around the district is trying to build greater consistency amongst our elementary schools. Six elementary schools, neighborhood schools, 88 square miles, how do we build and develop that, that consistency? So that was a main topic of, of our work today, is, is working toward having a more uniform and consistent approach in the things that we, in the things that we do. And that ranges everywhere from And that ranges everywhere from schedule structures to how we're implementing iXL, to homework offerings, classwork, just a wide range of areas that we think we can grow in terms of consistency. So I just wanted to say thank you to those professionals who are with me today. I believe that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. Barbara, we have special reports and correspondence, and I see we have two visitors at New Audits.
Yes, Mr. Foodie. Mr. Ferrioli and Mr. Ferry will now give us...
Steve?
Thank you. I had a couple of questions about the education report.
Oh, sorry.
Did we write letters to the kids who were invited to perform the turns, y'all?
Yes.
Outstanding. I think based on what our student representative said, we should also be sending letters to the kids who went to the Model UN and obviously performed extremely well, and the kids who auditioned for the region band and were accepted. Those are just outstanding things for kids to do. So thank you. Really pleased to hear that.
We're good? Okay. Barbara?
Mr. Ferrioli and Mr. Ferry are here to present the annual audit for the school year that ended June 30th, 2016.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
I'm Mr. Ferrioli, and this is Mr. Ferry. I'm the good cop, he's the bad cop. If you recall, last year when we were here, I had two concerns. My first concern was we were looking to sell bonds, $6.5 million worth of bonds. And in July of 2016, we went into the bond market, and we received an interest rate of under 2%. And frankly, we nailed it. We did a really, really good job. Part of the reason is that, good old, it's always great to be lucky. The markets have been low for a long period of time. Federal Reserve just raised rates last week, and they're probably going to start moving rates up higher. So we did hit the market at a nice time. But also what helped us a lot was we have a very strong credit rating. We have a double-A credit rating. The higher the credit rating, the lower the interest you pay. We are a double, we're in the double A's, which means we have a higher credit rating than the state of New Jersey. So that helped us a lot, but it is...
So does any other state.
If you start, I remember growing up and being in college, I had no clue what a credit rating is, but more and more, if you look at the newspapers, you'll start hearing states and cities and towns throughout the country are in trouble. For us to maintain a double-A credit rating, I think reflects well on the community. We were able, one of the reasons we were able to maintain it is because our surplus, as you know, in the last couple of years, has been very good. When I was here last year, my second concern was that if we used all our excess surplus, which you're required to do by law, that we don't put ourselves in a position that this year our surplus would be down. Tom's going to review the surplus with you, and I'm happy to say we generally put back everything that we used last year. So that will help you in your guidance on your '17, '18 budget. But as you're preparing that budget, you don't want to use too much surplus that puts you in a bind for '18, '19. Because when you're preparing a budget, you always have to look at the impact, not on the current year, but what's going to happen the year after. So Tom will review the surplus, but we did put it back, and I'm pleased to say that. There are a few minor comments. Generally, you're a very large district. You have tons and tons of state and federal compliance you have to deal with. The paperwork is remarkable, overwhelming at times. We are required to comment on every little thing. You know, we've been up here before, and we've made comments in which we've overcharged or undercharged for $2, $3, $4, which for a budget our size is totally immaterial, but to comply with the regs of the state, we had to do it. So Tom will review the surplus, the comments, anything else you may want to say, then will be available for any questions.
Tom?
So you received two packages. One is a CAFROM, Comprehensive Annual Financial Statement. That's the bigger document. The other one is the Auditor's Management Report. That's like, I like to call it our little report card. It basically goes over what we have to audit and any comments or recommendations. So why don't I do those first? On the comments and recommendations, one of them is on the food service area, and the other one is on the ASSA. 99% of my schools have either student body, student activity, ASSA, or cafeteria-related comments. This is kind of norm. So on a RICER scale of 10 being the highest, these are about a 2. But unfortunately, as Chuck said, especially when we do the food service, we work for the state and the federal government, so there is no leeway whatsoever. If we do find a problem in our sample, we have to know it, note it. It goes in the back of the management report as a plus or minus error, and so I got to comment on it. So the first comment I have, if you have the management report, is on page 7. In October, November, and December, free and prepaid meals served were overstated. Okay, so what we do when we audit, very briefly, is we look at the number of meals and the number of meals claimed to the federal and state government. Based upon the number of meals claimed, we get reimbursed. So we make sure that you're not overstating or understating. So that's how the comment goes, and what we do is, in the day, we used to check cafeteria tapes. Now we've got some machines that actually spit out the reports, but we did have an under-overage. I do have that actually number. The difference, based upon our, the number of meals claimed in total were 250,000. We tested about 77,000, and our difference was $1,700, 1,700 items, which give you an over/under claim of $795. So you can see, it turns out, not to be, it sounds like a lot, but the dollar amounts aren't that great. I've never heard the state ever coming back to ask you for this money if it's over or underclaimed. It's just the difference. If they do, the USDA will get a hold of us, and we'll deal with it then. On the ASSA, that's the student activity count as of October 15th. The ASSA was put in place about maybe 10 years ago, 15 years ago, and it was supposed to be a tool for state aid. It's never, and they required the school district to put together tons of documents, put this thing together, a snapshot as of October 15th, and for us to come in and do the audit. Because again, it was going to be based upon your state aid. Hasn't been there. Our state aid's been flat for a number of years, but we still continue having to do the audit. So the comment in that, or there were three students not classified in accordance with their free and reduced lunch applications as of the October 15th deadline. So we checked the free and reduced lunches, and those go into an at-risk category, and there was only three of them. So that's all I have for the comments. Any questions? Okay. Yes, sir.
You said that you work for the state and federal government. Are they paying you part of this award, or are we?
Well, I guess...
I'm funded, man.
Exactly. Well, I mean, yeah, if you look at the state, if you look at your budget, yeah, there's a lot of state aid that does come in. But no, they give us compliance supplements. They say, okay, auditor, this is how you have to look at it. Just like we do your title, your IDEA's, they give us compliance supplement, and they tell us exactly how to do the audit. We can't freewheel it. Okay, as Chuck mentioned, I'll talk a little bit about the excess surplus calculation and your fund balance. Again, it's the excess surplus calculation is in the back of the management report. And then based upon that, we decide whether, it decides, again, it's a state formula that we just inherit, and we just pop it into this report. It's on page 15 of the management report. It starts off with your expenditures for the year, does a bunch of adjustments, comes up with a total adjusted expenditure number, multiplies that times 2%, and you come up with the magic number of, let's see, this year it was $1,422. Your total fund balance is made up of multiple layers. Your total fund balance this year was $4,362. Of that, $433,000 were encumbrances. Those are purchase orders as of June 30th that haven't been paid. So what we do, add it up, $4,300, is we take that money out, put it in aside, because we know that's money that's going to be paid out. We have excess surplus designated for subsequent year's expenditures. That was basically the excess surplus from prior year that we had to put in this year's budget to balance the budget. We have other restricted balances, which are capital reserve and emergent, I'm sorry, capital reserve and a maintenance reserve in the tune of $1,571. And then what we do is we have unassigned fund balance for semi, that was the one program that we had. And then actually, to the fund balance this year, we had some excess, besides the excess surplus, we took some of our regular fund balance to balance the budget. That was $270,000. And then we're left with excess surplus that was generated from this year, $2,940. That money has to go towards your 17, 18-year budget to offset taxes. So basically, it's the state telling you that you have to do, you have to put that money aside and put it in the budget. So that's it for the excess surplus. I know it's a really long document.
So if there are any questions, we'll try and answer them.
Actually, when taking into consideration that last year, we put $200,000 into capital reserve and $500,000 into maintenance reserve, if you put those numbers back in and not going in, we actually had a larger surplus this year than last year.
It's hard to tell, well, we...
Meaning like if we had 2.9 last year, and we didn't put that 200,000 in, we would have had 3.1 million.
For excess surplus?
For excess surplus.
Right.
And this year, we have a $2.9 million excess surplus, and that's after we put in the 500,000. So our surplus actually grew.
Yes.
Okay.
How do we call, I mean, the year before, we transferred in all sort of legislation. I'm not sure if that's not...
Less.
Yeah. Okay. I know we made transfers.
Yeah. At the June of 2016, before the end of the school year, we transferred 500 to maintenance. The prior June, we had put 200,000 into capital reserve.
So 300,000 more.
Yeah.
And it's good to be in that position. As I warned this board in prior reports, you want to stay away from peaks and valleys because you usually use your surplus one year, and then it's not there next. That's why it's very careful on how much you're going to use in this year's budget. You also better look at the next year to make sure that you're in good shape. Okay. Do you guys, as an example, we have a contract with Joe Roselli's firm. You guys confirm that when you do that in the audit?
We look at contracts...
Okay.
...to make sure they're advertised.
Okay.
We make sure, even though it's not required, I do look at pay-to-play documents.
Okay. Okay. All right.
There's all different methods of auditing.
Number one method is the fear of God. And, you know, as long as people aren't sure what we're doing or when we're doing it, we change it every year. I mean, there are other things that are more scientific.
Fear is a great motivator.
But fear works very, very well.
Great motivator.
And there is a lot of test checking we do. Like, do we check every payroll stub and every person on it? No. But you can test check it and get a very, very good feel of it. Same thing with state aid. Well, that's easy. Just look at, you know, here's the number, you can tie that, and we know what the tax levy is. But there are other areas that we'll do more detail. And there's other areas that are mandated by the state, like the food service and all these little comments that we have to make because it's mandated by the state, although dollar amount is absolutely immaterial to your financial statements.
Okay. Real quick question. It was under 2% our interest rate on the bond that we just did for the roofs. Do you remember what their interest rate was on the bond that we're just about to retire? That I thought was in there, and I just...
Yeah, it is.
I got a little fuzzy. Maybe I just, I overlooked it and didn't see it, but...
3.3.
3.3, okay. And that's when average interest rates were...
Much higher.
Were in that eight to 10 range? Okay.
Yeah, so we do, you know, we do very well. And, you know, here again, that credit rating is very, very important. It's not, it's not like when you rebid something, it comes in cheaper. But if you're paying a less than 2% interest rate when everybody else is paying four, it's a real savings.
Okay. Okay. All right. I'm good. I don't know, anybody else have any questions? No? Okay.
I'd have to disagree with your characterization. I think you're the good cop because you reported on outstanding excess surplus. You gave us all these ticky tacky little fouls.
I'm the older one, so I have to be a good cop. All right. I will end it like I usually do. Merry Christmas, all.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Also, we have the minutes from November for consideration.
Anybody like to make a motion to approve those minutes?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you, Steve and Terry. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
I'm going to abstain, too. That's the one thing I didn't get to go over. Okay. Legal report, Mr. Roselli.
As always, a little loud.
Okay. I did speak with town council regarding possibly using the Wallace property for solar panels for us instead of utilizing our roofs. They're interested. There was a gentleman I spoke with from Siemens, Joe Ponzo. He's actually a resident in town. He's done this numerous times in other districts and municipalities throughout the state. So I had asked him to come to the January 17th meeting after the reorg so he can explain to us, you know, financing options, what we can do and how we can do it. And the town council will be here at that meeting so that they can listen and if they have any questions... have any questions, ask. I, I wanted to start that meeting at seven, as long as that was okay. I guess we'll have to vote on that after the year. But I just, you know, I don't want to give the guy a half an hour when realistically it's probably going to be him explaining for twenty or thirty minutes, and I'm sure we're going to be generating a lot of questions for him. So I, I think it would be a, a good discussion and, and a good way of us saving on our electric costs and being able to utilize funding for other things that we have in a district. We're going to be getting Hillcrest back from the township at the end of June of this year, or June of next year, excuse me. And we're going to start have, having to make those decisions. So January seventeenth, that meeting, it's a special workshop, special action workshop. He'll be coming to that meeting. I really like to take the rest of my president's report to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to serve as, as the board president this past year. I think we accomplished a lot. We hired Dr. Anamon. That was a no small feat. I think we went through more interviews this year and comebacks than in previous years. We also set our board and district goals in May of this year, which allowed us a little bit more time in, in reaching our goals, but more importantly, more time the administration was allowed to get up a plan, which they gave to us in August, and we're working towards As part of our goals, we, we've already revised our policy manual, that needed, that needed some updating. We're working on a mission and vision statement as well as a slogan for our, for our district with, I think we might have, based on something that Mr. Drew put forward to me, and it was success lives here. And after a little bit more discussion, we thought success starts here. It starts in the schools. And I, I thought that that was, I thought that that was a nice little, catchy little statement. We've, we've got some time before our next board goals, board meeting goals, you know, for, for next year. So we've got a little bit of, of work to do on our own goals, but we're a third of the way there, completed. I think with a little time, we can be completely finished with our goals, which would be, which would be great. We were able to keep the budget down last year to a zero percent increase. I was happy with that, as I think a lot of our taxpayers were as well. We've got our work cut out for us for the next year. We're going to have our hands full trying to figure out what we're going to do with There's a, there's never-ending list of things that we need to do during the course of the year, and it's, and it's how we set the priority to do that. The solar project, if we could do that, I think would be a great help in, in freeing up funds so that we can rehabilitate possibly the Hillcrest building and use it for either a steam academy, part of the BD school being in there, administration building. I mean, we got, we got a lot of things that we need to discuss and figure out is what we can use that building for, but that's an asset, just like the Wallace property is an asset. And if we can utilize the Wallace property to generate savings for us via solar power, we're, we're really doing us some justice as well as the taxpayers of the community. One thing I, I gotta say, I was a little disappointed earlier in the year when Mr. Dever opposed the solar project, but I really want to thank him for opposing it. I think what he did slowed us down a bit, made us think about what we're doing and what the possibilities are. And I, I, I truly want to thank him from the bottom of my heart for doing that. You've been a great asset to the, to the district and to this board. I want to thank you, maybe a little early, but I want to thank you for your service and your friendship and, and all that you've done for us. So, thank you. I, I want to, I want to give Glenn two minutes. There was something that he told me that I thought that the rest of the board should hear, and it was about Eagle Scouts. So I, it shouldn't take him too long, but I, I think that the, the rest of the board should hear this, so.
First off, say I'm not going to use any last names because they're minors. And, and before I do that, I'm going to welcome Connor from Troop 159, who's working on our badge and attending the meeting tonight. And I had privilege a few days ago of attending a Troop 159 Eagle ceremony where three young men received recognition for achieving Eagle. And to make a long story short, that was quite an accomplishment. And, but from a district standpoint, there was something notable that happened. Two of the boys recognized as mentors, and this is a, they only give these pins out to very few people who have helped them develop into who they are. And two of them named teachers from our district, Mr. Andruley and Mr. Smolinski. And I, I was very happy to hear that, especially as a board member, so.
You know, I say, you know, we should thank them for what they do. They're affecting-
It is a significant honor for those men.
I personally want to thank-
Is there any information to share with me? Say something?
Jamie, did you want to have any words or you want to wait till later?
I had a few real quick. I'll get my thank yous out. First, I'd like to thank the people of West Milford for allowing me to serve. I'd like to thank my wife, Allison, and my sons, James and Matthew. And I'd also like to thank the hard-working staff of West Milford and each board member, starting with, starting with Marilyn Schultz. Marilyn, PTA mom, former board president, thanks for caring for our children. Thank you for your support, and you have never failed to pick up the phone when I had a question and call you, and I appreciate that, so thank you. Debbie's not here, but I'll still say it. Debbie, thanks for your involvement with the Education Foundation. You have a street smart approach to issues, and when Debbie has a funny feeling about something, everybody knows I have a funny feeling about this, I'm the pay attention to, so thank you, Debbie. Mr. Bailey, he has a lot of board experience. The voters have put him here for a long time. He's not a conventional board member and has a unique approach to issues and what works. Thanks for your involvement with athletics over the years. Rodney's not here, but I'd still like to say thanks to Rodney. We had a few conversations where he's changed my mind by looking outside of the box on some issues. To one of our newest board members, Terry Dwyer, thank you. The district needs you. Your foresight and experience as a former teacher are invaluable to West Milford, and I hope you continue to ask questions and take on important issues. So thanks, Terry. Glenn, you're here because you had to be. I believe you had firsthand knowledge of issues that needed to be addressed, and that's what you've been working on. Your work on district policy has been a long time coming. It's greatly appreciated, something that needed to be done, and you've really spearheaded that operation of going through each and every one of them to, to correct things that need to be corrected, so I want to thank you for that. Steve, Steve Drew, you have brought focus on budgetary concerns. You've always said that we need to improve education while maintaining costs, so thank you for moving this district forward in that manner. And last but not least, Jim Foodie. I supported you from the beginning because I, like so many others, wanted someone to shake up the system. And shake it up you have, but in a positive way. I met Jim's wonderful family, and that's something he can really be proud of. Thanks always for listening to my ideas with an open mind. Thanks for your leadership and concern for the children of West Milford and the citizens of West Milford. The accomplishments that you already spoke of were the, the board has filled the position of superintendent, and this isn't something I expected, but I wrote it down, so we're kind of on the same track there. You know, the superintendent position was important. We've overhauled policy, which has been very important, and not only overhauling policy but holding people accountable for their actions, which is something that, you know, we need to do, we need to follow our policy. We have not only kept our budget and tax burdens down, I believe we led the township to also look at lowering the tax burdens on the citizens. So thanks again for a great experience from everybody, and thank you, West Milford.
Thank you, Jamie. That concludes my president's report. We're going to move on to petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each petitioner for a period of thirty minutes. And then, time permitting, other petitions and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until the thirty-minute period transpires. Petitioners speaking during petitions and requests are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Barbara, has anybody requested to speak? Would anybody like to speak? Mrs. Grettina, she got her hand up first, Steve, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me go first. I'd like to start off, I'm Deborah Grettina from the district mathematics supervisor role, and I'm here tonight, first off, to wish everyone Happy Christmas and a joyous Yuletide. But I really am here to celebrate the career and recognize reluctantly the retirement of one of our dear faculty members, Ms. Kathleen Doherty Hewens, who's on the agenda. And I'd be remiss if I did not come up to recognize Mrs. Hewens's contributions to West Milford. Many of us have had a connection somehow, some way with Mrs. Hewens over the years. I know Mrs. Schultz has had a lot of connection with her. But it was very difficult for me to receive the letter of resignation, of, of retirement from Kathy because she has been so dedicated to the students and the community of West Milford. She's been named West Milford Teacher of the Year, she was Passaic County Teacher of the Year, she was runner-up for New Jersey Teacher of the Year. But we've been talking a lot tonight about character because that seems to be a theme that we're really looking for. We need to recognize that Kathy Hewens is actually probably the mother of character education in West Milford. Before it became law, Kathy was involved at McAbbin School with grants from Rutgers University in the amount of ten thousand dollars to bring in the Alveus Anti-Bullying Prevention Program. And she was the real spearhead to begin that program. It has evolved into a very tremendous program now, of course, which is supported and demanded by law, but Kathy was the heart of the program, and she's carried that through not only in her building, but in every class that she's ever had. She's always been creative, intelligent, she's dedicated, she scores fours on her app, on her evaluations with no problem. I have no problem recommending her as a teacher for any student, any parent. She has also received grants from Optimum Light Path for iPads in her classroom. She has received grants from ING for a smart board in her classroom. And she has also received the many, many technology grants from your West Milford Education Foundation. We thank that support for the community, for Kathy's classroom. Kathy retires with her husband with a sad, but joyous heart because she has always explored many new opportunities. In fact, the day after school ends, she's always on the road and off exploring hiking and mountaineering and wherever she needs to go during the summer. But we wish her well, and we thank Mrs. Hewens for all of her contributions over the years. And Kathy, we miss you already. Best of luck. Thank you.
Very well said.
Anybody else like to speak? You're going to get up to the microphone, my friend?
Yes.
Okay.
If I'm recognized.
Oh, you're recognized.
We know who you are.
Steve Drew, five sixty-seven East Shore Road, Hewitt, New Jersey. Now, you're speaking, you're speaking as a resident, correct? Not as a board member, okay. Just want to clarify that for people, okay.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Dever for his participation on the board. He's always had a positive outlook, I've learned from you, and, and you'll be missed. I think you've done an outstanding job, and, you know, we're, we're sorry to see you go, but thank you for what you've done, and really, I think we've all, I know I've, I've become better by, by listening to you, so thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you, Steve. Would anybody else like to speak? Jamie, does your wife want to speak and say, hey, you've done a good job?
Would you embarrass her?
No. All right, nobody else would like to speak? Need a motion to close?
See, no motion to close?
Thank you. Thank you, Marilyn. Thank you, Glenn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Need a motion to adopt the agenda?
Two, two changes.
Okay, as it presented? Go ahead, Dr. Anamon.
Page seventeen, personnel, number thirty-nine. We're going to strike through the first name, Pope, all the way across to Matty. So the provisional teacher and a mentor teacher, the top one, any of those columns will be, it's a strike through. And on the back page, page twenty-four, education, number twelve. Incident report, two thousand seventeen, H1 is substantiated, not unsubstantiated. So that's H1, and it's substantiated.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, now, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
With the handcarries? The changes?
With the changes. And the handcarries. We got a hink, one hand carry.
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any discussion? No, okay. All in favor then?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Drew?
I would like to move items from one through sixteen.
Set it.
Okay. I have a question, Barbara, number ten. I see that, and you can, we can use it, number nine, to, to get my point across. We're going to approve transportation joint-year agreement with Jefferson Board of Ed to transport one child from Butler to the Hojokah School of Trade. Price on that is fifteen thousand seven oh eight seventy-two. When I look at number nine above it, we're paying an administrative fee?
Out of county. Okay, out of county.
Out, out of county, that's why that is?
This, this is down in South Jersey.
Okay.
Yeah, that one's in Camden, but the other thing I think that's important is that number ten is actually a receivable because we're going to be receiving from Jefferson.
Correct, correct.
Because that student moved to Jefferson mid-year.
Are, is, my point being, is Jefferson paying an administrative fee to us on top of that, or?
I don't believe so. The, the difference, and Barbara can confirm it, but the difference between-
If we're paying it, why aren't we?
The difference is that, yeah, the difference is that for number nine, you're in an agreement with the county-
Yes.
-educational services, which, similar to where we pay for Bergen County, an administrative fee, similar fees in Camden, versus Jefferson is paying directly to us as the district, the same way that we would pay direct to other LEAs or local education agencies. So that's really, there, nine and ten are really not the same, they're really handled differently.
Ed Services Commission's always charged us.
Administrative fee.
Even Passaic County charges us.
Yes, yeah. I was just curious if, if, if we- I was just curious if we, are we allowed to charge that?
I don't think we, no.
I don't think you can, right?
No.
I'm seated, and I couldn't say on campus.
Okay. I was just curious.
And realize, too, that these contracts, once they're considered and approved by the board, they have to go down to the county superintendent for approval.
Yes, yes. I'd like for the board to notice that item number six, okay, go on, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just would like to note that item six on the agenda is for the auditorium renovations at the high school for $836,800. There are some incidental fees on that, but it's savings of about $300,000 compared to what we expected to pay from what we put in the budget, because we had had 1.9, we took off for the air conditioning.
About 1.6 in the-
Yeah, something like that, right?
Yeah, and this is including two alternates. One is to create some storage in where the pocket doors are now, in the side of the auditorium walls, so that you'll be able to create some storage areas in there, which storage is always a problem at the high school, and also the new stage current. So there was something to do with the, I'm not thinking, what's the word that-
The balance.
The balance, that's it. There was something to do with the balance. That's it, thank you.
Did we have any artist renderings that we could possibly, was there anything?
I didn't ask them, they haven't said anything. I haven't, they haven't gotten back to me about that. But when the committee did ask for something, I did ask them if there was something that they could provide us. I'll follow up on it.
Okay, thank you. Did we ever find out if it was friable or not friable?
They're also looking into that. As far as they, they believe it's non-friable.
Okay.
But from what I've been told, the asbestos abatement contractor and the general contractor are going to have to work together-
Yeah.
...in order, they have to, I think the bolts have to be severed so that the seats can be removed, and then the abatement contractor will then be able to take the tiles out. But they're going to have to work out the details. That was part of the specifications for the bid, and when they have the initial meeting, they will definitely highlight that. So the architects are aware of it.
Any other discussion? Glenn, go ahead.
Yeah, before I have a couple of questions, but before that, on 15 and 16, I'd like to just recognize the PBA Local 162 for their donation to the autism program at Marshall Hill School, and the Marshall Hill PTA for raising funds for the hardware at the climbing wall. I think those are notable things. I would like to ask about the auditorium renovations, and I think maybe the public would like to know, we're spending $840,000 almost. Can you just kind of go over really quickly what all that is going to be done?
I thought we took this. I know.
I don't think that probably means it.
Yeah, I think we did. Mm-hmm. But that's a-
It was a different version.
I'm drinking it.
Hopefully I brought it with me. We can just summarize it, Barbara. Basically, they're going to be replacing, you're going to be painting, there're going to be acoustical walls, new lighting in the auditorium, new flooring-
Floating ceiling.
Carpeting, new seating, they're going to, let's see, what else?
Float the ceiling.
Painting.
Dings.
They're going to redo the front of the stage. It's like phase one. The HVAC has been repaired, they're not going to do any sound, but they will be pulling cable so that any future modifications to, for the projectors and presentation systems, everything will be there already. So they're anticipating that the major demolition will take place the week that school is closed in April, and then the, I believe substantial completion is around August 17.
So is the major part of that, the floors and the seating?
Yes.
And the ceiling, too, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, the floating ceiling?
Yeah, they're going to be putting in new ceiling tiles.
And did I hear you say that there's also a new curtain in our future?
Yes.
That's probably not too cheap.
No.
Not what?
Those are big.
Not what?
Not cheap.
No, actually, I don't believe it was. It was, I think, $18,000. So that's really not so bad.
Oh, yeah, in the grand scheme of things, yeah.
Yeah, because usually they have a warranty of about 20 years because they're, they need to be finally target and all that. So it could have been, I'm very excited about the project. I think that it's going to be great for the kids next year to have a new venue, and, you know, the staff is going to have a new place to be able to open it up. This past year, they opened up the auditorium, and they actually had air conditioning. And next year, we're going to have a new auditorium for them to have their, Dr. Anamone will be able to do his first-day speech in a new auditorium. So we're looking forward to it. Thank you for support, because the board was very reasonable when it came to what's the give and take. So I think it'd be great for the kids, it's free space.
Any other questions? All right, Steve.
My understanding, even though we're not upgrading the sound system, the ceiling and the walls, there will be a substantial improvement in acoustics?
Absolutely.
Which I think is-
Yes.
-as important as anything we're doing now. And having sat in those seats, I think having these seats is-
Yeah.
A good argument. On item number seven, we are proceeding with the environmental sampling at Hillcrest. Do we have any idea when that's going to happen and when we'll have a report?
I will let them know tomorrow that it's been, if it's approved tonight, I'll let them know tomorrow. They said everything takes about two weeks. I don't know whether they're going to be able to get into Hillcrest next week to start the samples, but from when they take it to when they test and do the report, it's about a two-week period. So we may have something in the middle of January.
I'm concerned that the clock is ticking on how long the town is going to be there before that's in our lap, and we have to make use of it, so, and everything is waiting on that stuff. Two weeks sounds good. I was hoping it wasn't. I would like to basically express my appreciation for item 12, assuming we approve that. The fireworks last year, there was cooperation between the schools and the town, and it really was successful for everybody. I think it just turned out to be absolutely great event, and I'm happy that we could do something to help the town with that, and I'm very happy that we're considering that again. Item 14 says that we will reimburse at the mileage rate established by the board. What rate is that?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Travel expenses.
It depends. Mileage, if it's travel miles, like by car, it's 31 cents a mile. But the mileage reimbursement is for different activities that staff is going to be attending, different professional development activities. So if they're getting reimbursed for travel, it's 31 cents a mile.
Okay.
But they're also getting, you know, the board approves the fees if they're attending a workshop.
That I know says specific mileage rate, and I was just wondering what rate that is.
Yeah, that, well, actually, it's established by the state. It's 31 cents a mile.
Which is different than the federal.
Which is different than the federal.
Yes.
Substantially.
Substantially less.
Substantially different. Yes.
And I'd also like to express my appreciation for the donations, 15 and 16, which is outstanding that our PTAs and that we have citizens who are willing to do that kind of thing and work together and donate to the district. That's wonderful.
Okay, sit.
Sit.
Roll call, please, Barbara, on items 1 through 16.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Number 17, Steve?
Like to move item number 17.
Second.
Bills.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Abstained.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes, to payroll, abstained to the remainder.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
We got number 18, Steve?
Like to move item number 18, transfer resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? I have, Barbara, there was one item for $2,110.
Science, computer, Java textbooks.
Yes, thank you. I knew it was something to do with coffee.
Or programming.
My concern is, it says to purchase computer science, Java textbooks, to be Board of Ed adopted January 2017. So we're transferring money for something that we haven't even adopted, or as far as I know, even really discussed. Shouldn't we hold that until, until the January meeting?
And is that under January, January?
Yeah, we discussed these textbooks at the committee previous month, December.
In December, or in November?
November. November. It was a supplement to the programming course, C++.
You remember that, Terry?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, we had to know the textbook.
I've been too busy.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not.
They showed us the textbook.
Yeah, we have to transfer it back.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And in order to do the purchase order, we need to have the transfer in process.
You need to have the money in place.
So the money has to be in the account.
Okay, all right. Okay.
It's not approved for some reason, and you transfer it back.
That's it, any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Barbara.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Like to move item number 19.
Second.
And 20? 19, number 20.
Second.
Thank you, Marilyn. Discussion, anyone? None, roll call, please, Barbara.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes, to the October, not the Novembers. I couldn't find them out there to look at.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Abstained, 19, yes to 20.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Mr. Dwyer, education, please?
I'd like to move items 1 through 12 for approval.
Second.
Why am I? Okay, that's what messed me up. On page 23, the HIBs are labeled as number 12. So that really needs to be labeled 13, the HIBs on page 23. 1 through 12, any discussion on items 1 through 12?
Couple of questions.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Number one, is there a cost associated with the AP CAPS? Don't agree with?
Yes and no. There's no cost to us signing the letter of agreement, but there is cost, once we have agreed to it, there is cost in training for the staff and the implementation of the program going forward, which has already been board-approved.
Plus, any ancillary materials we'll have to purchase for a teacher, we'll have to get a teacher copy and a student copy of whatever materials we'll need for just normal run-of-the-mill costs, that would be.
No, that's already budgeted under tax materials.
It's going to be budgeted for for next year. So we won't be purchasing these items until after January 1.
And number eight, if somebody could just give me a little explanation on that, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. Just for a minute, just trying to think of a word in a confidential manner. So this is an added district student that the school proposed due to behavioral needs would need aid temporarily pending a report from a physician. So throughout that time period, which you'll see going back to that date of November 21, and then after receiving the report, we're extending that through March 31.
So this is a student coming into our district?
This is an out-of-district student, a current out-of-district student. So that student number 70547 is currently out-of-district, already previously approved. So the only addition is for an aide during that time period. I think they went back to amend the addition to the original motion that has the other out-of-districts, you know, all listed.
Right.
So that's why it looks like an addition.
You say that he's an added district student?
Right, the program is housed here.
Yes, correct, correct.
It is considered an out-of-district student.
And the only reason why I'm not naming the program is just to try to be as general as I can.
Are we going to get reimbursed from the sending district, then, the cost of that aide?
We, so we are the district that's placing the student?
We are.
Right, in that private placement.
Even though the program is at the school, in our district, he's still considered, he or she, I don't know, but the student's still considered an out-of-district student-
Okay, I got, all right, yeah, okay, got you, got you, got you, got you. All right. Any other discussion? See none, roll call, please, Barbara.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Marilyn, since Debbie isn't here, would you move Personnel and Student Affairs, please?
Okay, I don't want to do all of them, so why don't we just start with, under Personnel, I'd like to move items 1 through 11.
Okay, discussion? Okay, discussion?
Do your second.
I'll second.
Second, thank you. Any, any discussion? All right, and roll call, please, Barbara, on items one through eleven under personnel?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
And then, I guess, we'll go from item twelve through forty-one.
Okay, taking note that on number thirty-nine, we crossed one out, the first on the list on both the provisional teacher and mentor teacher. I do have a question on twenty-eight.
Did we do the second on that one?
No, good.
My second.
Thank you, Marilyn, or, thank you, Marilyn, and thank you, Terry. Number twenty-eight.
Got to have the same question.
You know, we spent...
Twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven thousand, I think it was, on that machine last year to clear off buses, and...
They drive the buses. They drive the buses through the scraper. We need drivers to bring the buses out and to move them while the other members of transportation are plowing and getting the snow that's come off out of the way.
Are these our bus drivers, then? These are our bus drives, and why do we need to approve them then as snow removal workers?
The voters have a separate rate of pay for snow remover workers.
Is it less?
Less than their hourly salary.
And not by much. What, do they make like twenty-five cents to twenty-eight? Okay.
Yeah, so historically, we've always, they've always posted a list of people, and...
So, none of these people will then be literally out sweeping buses, snow to provide, you know, emergency snow removal from the buses? They'll just be driving the buses through the...
Basically, they drive the buses through. They may end up cleaning off the SUVs, but that's...
When you say SUVs, you mean the minivans?
The minivans, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the minivans. They may be cleaning those off, but all the other buses go through.
Okay.
All the van, the twenty-four passengers.
That makes more sense, because when we approved the machine, part of it was that we wanted to, we were approving it because it was going to make things safer.
And we couldn't get anybody to...
Exactly, and we couldn't get anybody to get up at four o'clock in the morning and pull the snow down.
Right.
Because, but now, we still need them because the panics come in and they have to clean out a path, and then the buses have to be pulled out so they can go through the scraper.
Okay.
Can I get explanation, a little bit more explanation on number thirty?
It's contractual. Each of their legislative bargaining agreements have a provision for sick day reimbursement if they retire from the district. It's paid out in January, and it's board approved.
So, these are sick days that weren't used over the course of their entire employment?
Employment, employment.
Yeah, because I saw two hundred and forty-six days, and I went, wow. That's a lot, that's a lot of sick days. That was a good attendance record for that.
But I believe Mary was here about forty years.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Nope. Any, any other questions, guys? Okay, roll call, please, Barbara, on items...
Twelve through forty-one.
Twelve through forty-one. Thank you, Marilyn.
You're welcome. Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes, on everything except no on thirty-three.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
No on twenty-eight, yes on everything else.
Under personnel, I'd like to move item forty-two to hand carry. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
So, ends personnel.
Thank you, Marilyn.
You're welcome.
Mr. Dever? Policy?
Yes, under policy, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following agenda items, and I'm going to start with item fourteen through thirty-eight first.
Fourteen and thirty-eight?
Fourteen through thirty-eight.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Second.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Marilyn.
You're welcome.
Any discussion? No? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Under policy, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following agenda items, one through thirteen.
Second.
Thank you, Marilyn. Any discussion? Questions? Seeing none, roll call, please, Barbara.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Okay, special committees and liaisons. Mr. Robbins not here. Parks and Recreation, we have safety. I went to that meeting. Mr. Citro and Mr. Kane spoke about a need to develop plans, twenty-four-hour emergency plans for each and every school, following what happened last year at Westbrook, when the roof leaked, the school flooded, and nobody knew what to do. That they want to develop, we have district-wide emergency plans, but not some, not plans for an actual, an individual school when we have a emergency like that. So, that was really the bulk of their discussion. They, they talked about protocols for, for bomb scares, since we had one earlier, I think it was November, we had that one? It was November, right, end of November, something like that?
In November, we did this out.
Yeah. That we had a bomb scare, and there's new protocol that the state police are using based on data that they've collected from years and years of dealings with, you know, calls being called in for, for bomb scares. And it pretty much is to stay in place unless it's something really obvious. They didn't want to talk about too much of the detail of what that, well, they, they did, but they don't want to let out details of, of those protocols because somebody wanted to do something horrible, they could use those to their benefit, so I'm, I'm not going to discuss that at all. So, with that, I, I just thought it was good that we're developing an emergency plan for each and every school. I think that's, that's smart. Mrs. Schultz, you have superintendent's roundtable and Passaic County School Boards Association.
There's a meeting this Thursday for the superintendent's roundtable.
Okay.
In which I will be attending, and I have nothing for Passaic County School Boards Association.
Okay. I have nothing on New Jersey school boards. Mr. Drew?
The legislative, they're once again talking about removing superintendent caps, but my ability to divine the will of the legislature is, I'm not sure I use one of those magic eight balls. Absolutely impossible to tell. You know, and I'm, I'm very hopeful that we'll get the state funding next year, but it just seems like it would be political suicide to reduce that. You know, there's been all this discussion about the added districts and reallocating funds, but I just cannot see, you know, the legislature proceeding with that. That's all I had on that. With the technology oversight, I think that's really a great way to try to phase in the one-to-one with the, in conjunction with the, that'll, that'll give us some opportunity to see how that's working and what we're doing.
It's a very small, controllable pilot.
Yeah, I just love that.
Pilot starting big, we'll start small.
We'll get some experience. I'm, I'm hoping that even though we're later than some districts, that, that if we do this well, when we get to one-to-one for the entire district, that we will leapfrog over the districts who may have been early and had problems. So, doing a pilot like this, I think is really, we should be able to glean a lot from that.
Okay. West Milford Education Foundation, Mrs. O'Brien isn't here. We have the Township Board of Ed Joint Committee, myself and Mr. Dever.
I can, I can update you on the Ed Foundation.
Oh, okay.
I can tell you that there were awards, we're in the process of, all, all the recipients have been notified that the Ed Foundation accepted their grant applications.
Okay.
And we're expecting the check in the business office this week so that we can start ordering the supplies that were part of the grant process.
Okay, good, thank you. As far as the Township Board of Education Joint Committee, we're going to have one on the, on the seventeenth, where the town council will, will come to our meeting and listen on that solar presentation. Other than that, we're going to set up a clear and cut schedule in January when we, at our reorg, we get our meeting dates down pat. We voted on them and agreed upon them. We're going to forward that to the town council, and we will set up clear and concise dates throughout the year for us to meet and, and work and, and just, and talk about things. That's that.
Jim, I just wanted to add something to that real quick.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add to the, I'm, I'm glad to see that the, the town and the school board is investigating a joint venture in solar. I was very adamant about the profit that the investors make on these deals, and that we are being real smart about it and trying to eliminate the middleman. So, we'll be reaping all the benefits. West Milford citizens in West Milford will be reaping all the benefits from a solar joint venture as opposed to renting them and having an investment company, as, as previously proposed, to come in and put solar panels, and effectively, we rent them. So, at least this way, we're looking at, we're really looking at some savings and some, some money pouring into both the district and the town. So, I'm glad to see that we're moving in that direction. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we have old business. Do we have any discussions on old business? Mrs. Dwyer?
I just, I'm, I'm very concerned about the auto shop and the, the position there. I think it's our responsibilities aboard to move our vocational programs as well as our academic, and I just, I just hope that there's somebody out there who can take this job and, and move this program forward. We need to keep our kids in district.
I'd like to take it a step further. You know, it's, it's funny, because we need to have somebody that's certificated. PCTI, they don't have to have somebody that's certificated to teach their auto shop program. So, I think we need, as a, as a board, is to send a letter to, or a resolution, if you want to call it, to the Commissioner of Education and, and people on the Educomit, Education Committee in the Assembly and the State Senate asking us, you know, asking them for permission to circumvent that rule. I think that if we can't find it, we have a need, and it's not fair that we can't, we can't fill that need.
Right.
But the county VOTEC schools are allowed to fill that need without that person being certificated. So, you know, maybe we should do that.
Can the county superintendent give us an exception?
No.
Dispensation.
He's from the state, but he can't give us that. That has to come, that has to come from the state. Yeah.
Really, the, the only way to do that would be to get school boards to lobby on our behalf and get them to change that law, which we would do through a resolution that we would then send down to the delegate assembly. And then the delegate assembly would vote on whether they want to push that forward, and once that happens, they really do put a lot of muscle behind it to lobby on those, on their behalf, but they only do like three or four of those a year. So, that would be the first step, is to pass a resolution saying we want to send this to the delegate assembly, and then whoever our representative is, to the delegate assembly would go there and essentially argue on its behalf and say, this is why we want this, this is why it benefits all the school districts in the state. We want to push for legislation on this. So, that's something that we could do.
Okay.
Would it benefit us by going to New Jersey school boards and asking them to work on our behalf?
Well, that's what I'm talking about, so we would pass the resolution and send it to school boards.
Oh, school boards, okay.
Yeah, and they would bring it to their delegate assembly on our behalf. But then somebody from the district would have to go and argue for it and why we want it and, and those things. So, they vote on it. It's, it's a formal process.
So, we need some kind of resolution at the January meeting with that kind of policy?
Yeah, I, I...
No, no.
I don't think the next assembly is until May.
It's probably in May.
You look up the resolution in February.
Unfortunately, the change we're looking for is not going to happen in time to hire the auto shop person. We, we just can't do that with a non-certificated staff member. But it might be worth pushing it forward anyway. I can bring a resolution for that, and we can vote on it and move it along.
Okay.
But, again, it's not going to happen in two weeks. It's going to be probably not till May. And it's very...
Well, I think we need to look at the building program and several of our programs, not just auto shop.
Well, I wouldn't, we wouldn't limit it to auto shop. We would limit it to life skills classes and those kinds of things, rather than just, just math. You know, things like that where, where it's hard to find teachers, and, and we would want maybe somebody with life experience who can demonstrate that. There, there's ways to, to do that, but, uh, let me think about it. I'll come up, I'll send a resolution around, and then we can discuss for the January meeting.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's a very much an unfair advantage for the, for the county, and if anything, they should be brought up to our standards or make the standards the same for everyone. So, I'm glad this has even been brought up, because previously, it's been probably here forever and ever, and no one's ever realized it. And now we realize it, because we have a need, and we can't fill the need because we're bound by, under, we're, we're the underdog here, bound by a law that we can't even work around. So, it's ridiculous.
They're even exempt, I don't know if you know, from the superintendent's salary cap, and don't get any funny ideas, you. So, I mean, they...
It has to be adopted by May seventh, March seventh.
Can someone play the good old...
By March seventh.
Can someone play the good old voice?
It has to be down in school boards by March seventh.
Right, so that it can't present to the mayor.
Okay, so if we can get, can, I think we can get something done by, in January?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And they're just, you know, we've got a lot of people in the district who are, you know, blue collar, they're going to do this kind of stuff, and they're high-paying jobs for bike painters and welders and, you know, good jobs for people like that, you know, who may not want to go on a bus for two hours every day down to...
who may not want to go on a bus for two hours every day down to PCTI. I mean, we need to be able to provide that kind of education in the district.
Absolutely.
Which might include teachers who also have those skills, who might teach, you know, whatever, wrestling for two periods and cooking for three periods.
I know that we have people with those skills in our community.
Oh, yeah.
That could, you know, be brought in, but they certainly are not certificated, nor does it have the resources to get that.
Can I, I just want to comment, I probably should have mentioned this when we were talking about our AP and our site visits, it's along the same topic. When we were at Livingston, we went to take a look at STEM and some of their industrial arts programs. We went to see a man named Jim Novotny, who is well-known throughout the state for his work in STEM and industrial arts, and we had the opportunity to have with us Mr. Beatty, Mr. Van Wingerden, and Mr. Weedman, who were able to talk about our programs and talk about the things that we're doing here. And Jim Novotny, who is, again, this state-known person for this work, was very impressed with speaking with our people and talking about the things that we're doing here. So again, coming back to getting that word out and talking about the great things that we are doing here in West Milford, that was a perfect example of us sitting around a table with the people to talk to about it, and our guys being able to sit there and be part of the conversation and be impressive. So I just want to give them a shout out, I probably shouldn't have said that when we were talking about AP, because that was a major highlight of that discussion. So just want to say thank you to them.
Okay. Anything else under old business?
The only thing I'd like to bring up is, I'd like to ask the Budget Finance Committee to please find a way to budget for an HR person for our district. We are in dire need of it.
Budget, finance, okay.
Unless you're working on the next year's budget, if you could please find a way to fit that in.
Okay. Okay, anything else under old business? No?
Seeing none, move to close. Second.
Terry, did you have your hand up for?
No.
Oh, okay, okay.
Wait, wait, let's go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. New business?
I have new business.
Say that again?
I have new business.
Okay, go ahead.
I actually have an announcement to make, very torn over this, but my husband and I are moving down to our shore house in Ocean County. We've had a lot of life-changing events take place over the last six, seven months, and so we're going to be moving out of West Milford, unfortunately, and going down the shore, living down there till we figure out what we're gonna do. So I'm going to read this. "It's with much regret that I resign my position as trustee of West Milford Board of Education. It has been my pleasure to serve with you these past few years. I truly value the time I participated as a member of this board, and I thank the voters for their support. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve the public in this manner. I wish you all the very best, particularly as you work on behalf of all the children in our district. Sincerely, Marilyn Schultz."
Well, I'm sorry to hear that.
Marilyn, I'm so sad.
Me too. I just, it's bittersweet, but it's time.
My question is, are you gonna be around for any length of time, or is tonight it?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
The closing is mid-January, so.
Okay, so you'll be here for the reorg and?
I'm not sure, actually.
Oh, you party pooper.
(laughing).
I personally, I'm sad to see you go.
Me too, thank you.
You've had the interest of the kids and the districts in your sights the whole time, and your moving on is a loss, so.
Thank you. I just hope the replacement that you find for me is somebody that thinks like I do and puts the kids first.
We'll make that a priority.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry to see, really sorry to see you go.
Thank you.
Now after that.
Where's my mattress?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Boy, what a bummer and holiday, you, come on!
Can we refuse to accept?
I sent you an email.
Yes, you have to drive hours of.
Okay.
You did too, Jessica. Is that you?
Best of luck, Marilyn.
Thank you very much.
You know, best of luck. It's, I know it's not an easy decision to come by, so.
No, I love West Milford.
Yeah, so I, I, thank you. Well, we have a resolution here to read, and I would like to ask Terry, I guess?
Okay.
To read this resolution and spread it upon the minutes of this meeting.
Okay, I'm a little bit heartbroken. Okay. Whereas Mr. James DeBoer has served as a prominent member of the West Milford Township Board of Education from July 2014 until December 2016, and whereas Mr. Dever, Dever or DeBoer?
Dever.
Dever, has diligently served as Board Vice President, chaired the Policy Negotiations Committees, served on the Personnel Committee, and was a liaison for the Joint Committee between the Township and Board of Education, and whereas Mr. Dever held uppermost the welfare of our students in his decisions, and served with great skill and dedication, and whereas his service on the Board has brought him the respect of his colleagues on the Board, the administrative staff, and the teaching and support staff. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education, on behalf of the grateful community, publicly acknowledges and expresses its sincerest appreciation to Mr. Dever for his outstanding contributions to the West Milford Township Public School District, and be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the workshop regular meeting of the Board of Education of December 20, 2016, and presented to Mr. James Dever.
I didn't know that, Jamie, that, I would have done this earlier, I didn't know that he had left, but we'd like to give you this plaque on your back. Thank you very much. Oh, okay. I'm not supposed to be so tall. We have packs of leotards.
Jim? She didn't get the picture, let her do it again.
You gotta do it again?
Yeah.
Oh, 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 I didn't see you there, I'm sorry.
I didn't video shoot it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Here, Jamie.
Thanks.
Need a motion for second.
That was the motion.
Yeah, that was the motion.
Yeah, that, all right, motion and a second. All in favor of that resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We depose the business.
Yeah, one more, one more thing. We had had discussions earlier in Personnel Committee last week with regards to tools for our mechanics, and I showed Marilyn, I showed, I didn't get a chance to show Debbie, because she's not here tonight, and I, I'm sorry for that, but they had asked us to buy them tools, and in their job description for the chief mechanic, it says, "Terms of Employment: Complete Set of Heavy Duty Hand Tools Required." Now, these gentlemen have all brought in their tools, knowing full well that they had to use their hand tools, or they wouldn't have brought them in. So I would like to amend the job descriptions for our mechanics, just as it is in the chief mechanic job description, I would like it to read, "Upon Terms of Employment: Complete Set of Heavy Duty Hand Tools Required," just as it says in the, in the job description for the chief mechanic. So I'd like to make that motion that we amend the job descriptions for the mechanics to read in their, where is it, their Terms of Employment, that a complete set of heavy duty hand tools are required. So I would need a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, Terry, thank you. Any discussion, Marilyn?
I'm just wondering, I asked you this already, is this something that can be done at this point in time?
Yeah, the board can always change a job description when it wants to, it's one of the board's functions, so.
Jamie?
Yeah, just real quick, as an aircraft mechanic myself, it's kind of an unwritten thing when you apply for any job that has to do with repairing machinery, whether it's a school bus, an aircraft, tractor, whatever, it's, you bring the tools, I mean, that's a known. Specialized tools, which you're not including in that, be provided.
We purchased them already.
But normal hand tools is just, it's almost like common sense, you can, otherwise, my company would say, if you don't have the tools to fix the airplane, why are you here? You know, I mean, that's.
Yep.
Mr. Drew? It's absolutely standard practice. You go to work for a Ford dealer or something like that, if you don't have tools, they make arrangements for you to buy a set, here's a set, they loan me the money or whatever, but it's absolute standard practice. And the other thing is, these things can be fairly expensive, as you know, so, you know, you don't want a situation where we buy them a bunch of tools and they take them with them.
Well, that's part, that's part of, you know, a negotiation of a good mechanic, is I have the knowledge, and I have this $50,000 worth of tools that I come with, so, I mean, it's part of leverage, it's part of my leverage, too, you know.
All right, so I, you seconded that, Terry, any other discussion?
Is there any issue with a union contract with these folks?
What was the question?
Is there any question with the, with their contract?
No, there's not.
Non-classified, one more.
But by, this isn't any type punitive means of discipline, this is just trying to clarify what you guys want, that's all.
What they're requiring to do.
It's nothing to do with, it's just clarification, that's what we're doing here.
All right, roll call, please, Barbara?
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mr. Uber?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Okay, I guess that ends new business, and so we need a motion to close? Oh, you have something? You have something?
We do need to make a motion to extend the meeting to 10:30, maybe?
Well, we're.
And to go into executive session a half hour later than we originally said?
Yeah, we're gonna go into executive session in just a few minutes, so.
You think so?
No, 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 no.
So, we'll do that after we, we close. So need a motion to close new business?
Like to make a motion to close new business.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Glenn brought up the point that we need to extend the meeting, we had originally put nine for executive session, so we need a motion to move executive session till 9:40?
Yeah, we'll do that, and since we have a standing order to close the meeting at 10 o'clock, we need to extend that as well.
Let's say 11 to be, to be.
Okay.
We could always end earlier.
Yeah, I think we will.
I think so, too, but just in case.
Well, we're at 10:30, and we can always make it later.
Well, then we have to pass another resolution, why, it's easier, huh?
Yeah, make 11 and get out early in the world.
We'd be happy with that.
Oh, and be, exactly.
So you made that a resolution.
Okay, so you, you made that, we need a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Marilyn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Petitions and requests. Petitioners, petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each petitioner, for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other petitions and requests, limited to five minutes per petitioner, will be allowed until the 30-minute period transpires. All speakers are asked to give their full names, spell their last name, provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Nobody had asked to speak.
One hand up.
Oh, who? Oh, Mr. Sidowitz, I didn't, come on up, sir, how are you?
That's not how we pronounce it, is it?
We'll go with Sidowitz. Well, Sidowitz, 694 Lake Shore. Of all the times I've petitioned and requested in the past two years, I thought it appropriate to take this last opportunity to do it from this position, and God bless you, God bless your families, Merry Christmas, and Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Seeing none? Need a motion to close?
Move to close petitions.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Glenn, it is?
At nine thirty-six, I'll make the motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing HIBs, personnel negotiations, and matters of attorney-client privilege.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. There will be action after executive session. We have negotiations, a one-budget and finance, and HIBs that we'll be voting on afterwards. Executive session, it looks like it's 10:56. We do have three items to vote on, and we do have a correction. So, Dr. Anamone, would you like to, so we'll have to.
Joe, we have a correction I'd like to make for education number two. On page eight, would be the best way of correcting the date on the resolution. Recommendation of Superintendent to approve a foreign exchange student.
Oh, the retroactive?
Yes, it should say effective December 21, 2016, tomorrow.
Okay.
Would be the best way.
Somebody could just make a, a motion to amend that resolution.
I move to amend.
I second.
Number eight.
To December 21.
Yes, correct.
So you're, you're making the motion to amend item number two, Terry?
Yes.
On education?
Yes.
Where the date would be retroactive to December?
Not even retroactive.
Not even retroactive, effective.
Effective.
December 21st.
To December 21, 2016.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the tuition is waived for the student.
PG?
Uh, page eight, Marilyn, yes.
Number two.
Number two.
Who seconded that?
Jamie did.
So it'll be effective on December 21st?
Yes.
All in favor?
All in favor of making that, well, we have to actually do a roll call vote on that, correct?
Yeah.
You have to roll call on that, since that's how we voted on it to begin with, so.
You would have to do it anyway.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mr. Uber?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll move to negotiations. Make a motion to approve item number one under negotiations.
Second.
Thank you, Marilyn.
You're welcome.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Barbara?
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Uber?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Okay, budget and finance, Mr. Drew, we have item number one on page 23, last page, it's item 21 on page 23. Do you want me to read it? "Resolve that the Board of Education hereby approves the settlement agreement and release OAL docket number EDS 10964-2016, and be it further resolved that the Board Secretaries authorize to sign the agreement on behalf of the Board." Do I have a second?
Whereas in accordance with requirements set forth in PL 2010, Chapter 122, the West Milford Board of Education has received results of HIP investigative reports on December 20, 2016. Therefore, be it resolved that the West Milford Board of Education approves issuance of written decisions affirming, rejecting, or modifying.
Affirming, just affirming.
Affirming.
Yeah.
Okay, affirming the Superintendent's determination in following the HIP investigation. Incident report 2017 E4 substantiated, 2017 E5 unsubstantiated, 2017 H1 substantiated, 2017 H2 unsubstantiated, and 2017 H3 unsubstantiated. Second.
Thank you, Marilyn. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Uber?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Okay, and with that, I.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make, I'll make, wait, wait, I didn't make the motion yet, I.
You don't have to.
I would like, I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, Happy Hanukkah, whatever it is that, it is, so.
11:01.
Yes.
What's that?
11:01.
11:01, yes.
Who seconded that motion? Glenn, I believe?
Terry. Hang on.
Okay, so we, motion, Steve, you made the motion to adjourn?
Yeah.[1745.12]